In the regular meeting of the City Council of San Juan Batista, now in session. Mr. President, Mr. DeBries, would you please...
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the redeemed just as well.
Mayor Flores?
Here.
Vice Mayor Edge?
Here.
Councilmember DeBries?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
I call Mr. President.
Thank you. Next, on our agenda's public comments, these are comments submitted by the public on items that are not on the agenda.
Ken Hala?
Hi, my name is Ken Hala, 156 Lang Street. Thirty-three years ago, I called City Hall and I asked that the speed limit sign be removed from the front yard of my house that I had just recently purchased. And since that time, it grew and it grew and eventually it covered the sign.
Where's your house again, Ken? I'm sorry. Where's that, where are you? Where's my house?
156 Lang Street.
Old Lang or New Lang?
New Lang.
Okay.
Last month, it became an issue. And I talked to the city manager about it. And I'm actually pleased to say that we came up with a solution. And the solution was to move the sign a few yards up the street to a much less intrusive spot on the street and a much more visible spot on the street where people could actually see the sign and it didn't sit in somebody's front yard. So basically, why I'm here is to say thank you to the city manager and to say I appreciate that the city actually did something good for me and I think for the entire community and certainly for those who traveled on Lang Street. So I'm happy to begin this meeting on a positive note.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
There are no other cards?
No other cards? There's a card right there, you can just...
You don't actually need a card.
We're coming up because the reason that we take the cards is just to have a record of who's here. But you get to...
This is also a good thing. Okay.
Well, come on down.
My name is Mariana Thomas and I live on 45 Monterey Street in the Morentes House. And recently, just yesterday, a windmill market was very nice to let me put in a stand of my jams, jellies, cookies, cakes, which fruit comes from the Morentes House property. So I'm here, this is the mascot, Mama's Morsels, representing grandmas in all cultures, of which I've had several in my own life, in my perpetual existence in all country and here. So I would appreciate your patronage during this holiday season because the monies that I earn will go to restore the picket fence at Morentes House, the hardscaping, which is replacing the lawn, and also pruning of some trees which badly needed. So, you know, you're going to be buying gifts, just keep it in mind.
Do you have a flyer or anything?
No, not, I've been baking.
If you're going to sell your stuff, you need to advertise.
Okay, I'm getting there. I don't even have a TV or a cellphone, I'll get there though. Thank you.
They're really good.
Thank you very much, Mariana.
Put that out.
Thank you.
So you live in the Morentes House?
Yes.
That was previously owned by the neurosurgeon Susan?
Pardon me?
That was previously owned by the neurosurgeon Susan?
Yes.
Right there with the...
Keith Hoffers.
That historic house, isn't it?
Yes.
What's its status on the historical registry today?
It has, it's registered, yeah, it has a plaque. But, you know, I've been there 13 years and, I mean, I've been working on the garden and the electrical system in the garden needs replacing. It's costly.
Right.
So...
Well, it's a beautiful property.
Thank you.
We'll support you 100 percent.
It's nice to be there.
You keep it very well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mariana.
Any other public comment? If there are no more public comments, we close the public comment period. Now for the, the next item is the consent items. We have A through, A through Q. And so I'm not going to read any of them. If that, I guess if you get the agenda, you'll see they're there. If there's anybody, any...
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
Through this.
Any other discussion? Do we have any input from the public?
We don't need any.
I know we don't, but I'd like to do that anyway. Okay? We'll call for the question, all in favor respond by aye.
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 Attention, motion carries.
So a quick thank you to the staff for preparing all the agenda to give us...
Most of the consent agenda items were revisions of stuff where we left something out or something, not to any great degree, it's just grammar problems. All right. Presentations, permission items and reports. Presentation A, the presentation on resiliency and the microgrid by Leslie Austin of Green Power. Leslie, you got the floor.
All right, Leslie. Leslie came to our last council meeting, this was following the public safety power shut-offs of PG&E and all the fire and threats that we had in the past. And it was timely to talk about how we're going to run our critical facilities if we're out of power for a lengthy period of time. I provided a quick grant application that we have funded recently, which hopefully will lend some money to generators for our systems. We have temporary assistance in case. And the council agreed last month to receive the presentation from Leslie and from Rob Hunt from... To talk about microgrids and Green Power and that kind of thing.
Hey, good evening. Hi.
Hi.
Good to see you all, thank you for your time. We are excited to be here and share a little bit about Green Power. I'm going to go very quickly tonight because we promised Don that we would be prompt and keep the agenda moving and plus Dan has already made his intentions very clear. So just to give you a brief outline of tonight's presentation, which will take about two minutes, I hope, we want to quickly reintroduce Green Power to the new leadership of San Juan Batista. We also want to tell you just a little bit about how we've partnered for a sustainable San Juan Batista thus far and also reintroduce Mint Systems, who will give you some information about microgrids and talk with you briefly about ensuring essential services during power outages. So who is Green Power? We are your nonprofit neighbor from Santa Cruz. We are the folks who are dedicated to helping our region transition to a carbon-free future and you may know of our efforts involving organization for support of Monterey Bay Community Power, which is a community choice aggregate. The way in which Green Power works is essentially, we work in all of the various areas within the regions to identify leaders, like the council of San Juan Batista, who care about climate change and renewable solutions. And the way that we do that is to provide information and support. We want you as leaders to be an effective force for environmental change. And we also think it's really important, because not all communities are created equal, that we create sustainable solutions that are tailored to your needs. So some of the specifics, these are all the different folks we work with, you can certainly read those in the handouts that you have. Our goal is to really, as I said, provide support to help folks take concrete action. We also do a fair bit of work in helping our partners locate sound quality partners who, like Mint Systems, for example, tonight, will offer some technical expertise to help you design, build, and deliver your project on time and on budget. And we help with advocacy. We have community partners, like the Aromas Progressive Action League and other organizations, and we also help market your project within the broader community. We think it's also important to have media attention, both to help you celebrate your project when it's completed and also to help others in the community imagine their own carbon-free projects. So some people will say, and have said to us in the past, "So, you know, what's slowing our transition?" We think that when it comes to climate change, the science is clear. We think that the technology is available, but we think what holds us back is our political will. And I should say and be really clear, we don't mean just the leaders of, you know, various boards and councils. We think that it's important for Green Power to help provide the support that leadership needs within the community to help bring forward change. So these are a couple of the projects that we've been working on of late. I won't go through them because you've probably heard me talk about San Benito Health Foundation so many times now that you could repeat my words for me. How much do we cost? Absolutely nothing. We really are honored to help those of you who are working to help protect the planet and help protect our people. That is really our mission. So what I want to leave you with pretty quickly is that we know that zero-carbon resiliency is both viable and economically feasible. Return on investment is not just about the money. We all know that we can't quantify the return on having clean water and power. And we also have learned as a result of our work with Monterey Bay Community Power that big projects have the most significant impact on greenhouse gas emission reductions. We also know that big projects are the most exciting for people to work on and leave us all with a feeling that we've actually done something pretty significant. Just to give you a quick little background on how we've worked with San Juan Batista in the past, we basically, since 2017, have been collaborating off and on with the city manager to discuss a variety of options to help the city achieve their goal of becoming a green city. We have lots and lots of ideas on how to do that and we've shared some of those with... You know, maybe move into more formal discussions depending on the will of the council. Any questions? Seeing none?
I have a question.
Yes.
Therefore what? Let's see, ask.
So, well, the ask is for the city, well, so there isn't a specific ask at this point. Here's why.
Because you're leading up to the ask?
Well, so Mint will share a little bit about the essential services, which was something we heard you talk about at the last meeting and I believe I heard, yes, come back and talk to us about that, we need to understand that. So that's, I guess you could say that's an ask, it's really more a support. But from Green Power's perspective, what we want to be able to do before we make a specific ask is to understand the city council, their community, what do they want to do in terms of becoming a green city, share our ideas for that, and then collectively, collaboratively, come forward with some sort of proposal.
Well, that's a good thought, but I think the other way to look at it is, what is the ask? And then we'll tell you, as being representatives of the community, whether that ask is going to pan out or not.
Okay, so we'll move to...
We have no idea what you're, at least I don't, I don't know if you guys do, but I have no idea what you're asking for.
So the first part of the presentation, Dan, was just an introduction to who Green Power is. Let's move to the second part of the introduction and maybe that'll help.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. Thanks, Leslie. Let me just quickly switch over here. And Dan, I think to your point, the ask, what I think the ask is, generally speaking, is, does the city want to move forward with a more formal investigation of the feasibility of adding resilience to your critical essential facilities? Mainly the water facilities, the pumps could be as simple as, well number six, do we want to investigate what it will take to make that well resilient in the face of a planned or unplanned power outage?
Can you define resilient in that sense?
I will, yeah, I'll go into that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I probably reached over the fire council meetings too fast. That was in the wake of these power outages and searching for an answer that would separate us from the people who are being so reliant on me.
No, for sure, but just to the extent we're using terms, I always like definitions for terms.
Sure.
And he just used the term resilient, that sounds like a defined term.
Yeah, I would define resiliency as the ability to remain operational in the face of a power outage. In this term, in this context, we're talking about resiliency in terms of energy and power.
Oh, I see.
So the ability to keep essential services online, so again, the water, in order to keep the water running, you need the pumps to flow, in order to keep the pumps moving, you need electricity. So if there's an outage, what do we do? That's how I'm talking about resiliency. So as Leslie mentioned, we've worked with Green Power in the past on multiple projects. We are basically a technical support team for Green Power in a lot of these projects. San Benito being one, where we were the developer. We designed, engineered, built, commissioned, and continue to maintain that project. We are an energy product developer, we're also a consultant. We work in a multitude of ways. We can consult, we can engineer, we can advise, we can also implement. We can commission systems, we can maintain them, operate them, monitor them. We can do all of them together or we can do portions of them, depending on how the city decides to work with us if they do decide to work with us. Our experience is mainly in renewable energy generation projects, solar, wind, biogas. And we also do a lot of energy efficiency work. Most recently, we've done a lot of projects with battery storage, backup, backup batteries, I'm sure you've seen around, so, and the combination of renewable energy and backup in order to create what we're calling zero-carbon resiliency. So a quick summary of what I'm going to go through here. Like Leslie mentioned, I talked, we talked to Don, it sounds like the city is looking for a way to be prepared for future planned or unplanned outages. And we would like to find a way to be resilient in face of those outages and a way that also meets the city's climate action goals, which ideally would be zero-carbon. So we look at both technical feasibility and economic feasibility, both are important. You know, is it technically feasible to do what we're trying to do and is there money to do that? So one thing that Mint does is we look at all the various sources of funding, financing, grants, rebates. There's a lot of money out there available for these kind of projects, especially for cities that are looking to be resilient in the face of the recent outages of PG&E and the wildfires. Everyone is looking for answers and ways to solve this issue, so I'm going to show you a couple of ideas. There's some loans available, there's a number of grants and solicitations through the CEC, the DOE. And there's also some financing opportunities where the city can avoid any capital expenses. So we'll go through that really quickly, but keep things moving. Again, Mint, we kind of do it all, this just says, you know, we assess, we do the design engineering, we look at rebates, we look at finance, we design, we engineer, all of the above. Qualifications, previous clients, you see, we've worked with Granite Rock, we've worked with the City of San Ramon, we've worked with a number of local tri-county area school districts, the Diocese of Monterey, San Benito Health Foundation. So we've got good experience with entities of all types and sizes, public, private, small, large. So what is a microgrid? This is a kind of term that's been thrown around, I think a bunch of people don't necessarily know what it means. In the simple sense, it means that you have the ability to generate power onsite, store that power, and use it when there is no grid connection available. That's it. Doesn't matter where that power comes from, we'd like it to come from renewable sources, carbon-free sources, but it could come from a generator. If you have a generator and a battery and you can operate that without the grid, you've got a microgrid. That's as simple as it gets. So just when you hear that term being thrown around, that's all it means, is a way to connect all that. In this context, it's a controlled microgrid that operates, it automatically knows when the grid goes down, it switches on our onsite generation system, whatever that may be. So it'll draw power from the solar when the sun is out, it'll draw power from the batteries when it's not, or it'll flip on the generator when it needs to, when it needs to be, that redundancy, if it doesn't have solar, you're out of battery power. So in this instance, we're talking about a solar-powered microgrid, potentially with a generator backup. What that really means is solar's generating during the day, charging up the battery, and then when the solar's not out, you're using the battery for power. That's, everyone kind of follows that, right? When the grid goes down and there's no longer, you know, any way to back it up, that system, you'll have enough, you know, we designed this system to basically give you enough power for a day or two without any grid power whatsoever. And so that was kind of the design constraint that we've worked with. How do we power well number six, is the kind of the example we use, for two days without any grid? So I'm just kind of quickly moving through, but Don, let us know that there's this, you know, this is the site where well number six currently sits. This is that parcel right there, and we kind of looked at two options. We looked at maximizing the space, covering with solar panels, see how much power we could produce out of that area. And then again, just what well number six would need, which actually turns out to not be all that much of the land. So there's, again, back to the technical side of things, it's feasible. There's plenty of room to put the amount of solar power that we deem necessary to power that pump. The battery itself, the footprint is not very large, but we are talking about a large capacity battery. This is just a quick model, this just shows over the course of the year how much power the well uses and how much, that green line represents what our system would produce. So you can see that over the course of the year, there's only a few instances where you wouldn't have enough power and you'd need to flip the generator on if it happened at that instant. Otherwise, the system would work without any diesel generation or grid. Another option that I just threw out there, I was talking to Don about, this is in a larger sense, if we were talking about powering a larger portion of the city's needs, there's the biogas, bioethanol option. You could run a microgrid off of a biogas generator, which could potentially take methane from the wastewater treatment plant or some other biogas alternative. It's another carbon-free, you know, zero-carbon alternative, way smaller footprint, but way more cost and way more complexity. Just another thing to throw out there as an option if the city was looking at larger-scale infrastructure resiliency. Something that we'd like to talk about, in addition to the resiliency, by installing solar on the site, you'll also be offsetting all of the usage at that site. So no longer will you have a PG&E bill on that site, and that helps pay for the system. As we all know, PG&E rates are constantly going up and we know firsthand from PG&E representatives that we're kind of in contact with on a pretty weekly basis, rates are expected to go up by seven to nine percent next year and the following, year after year for the next five years. So by installing solar in this microgrid, not only will you have the resiliency, but you'll also be offsetting current bill usage, your PG&E usage in your bill, which helps pay for the system over time. So back to some of the funding options and the economic feasibility of all this, there are three distinct areas where we've kind of identified where there could be some funding available. One is this self-generation incentive program, which is through the CEC, the California Energy Collective. That's money that's available to all entities that are installing energy storage. It's just an open solicitation for any energy storage projects. Next, there's a couple of grants and solicitations that are coming out the end of this year, in December and in Q2 2020. A number of different energy storage solicitations that provide funding for projects like the one we're talking about. As you can see, there's quite a bit of funding available in four different types of grants. And so what Mint would do, help facilitate the application into these grants, writing up the technical application, kind of as we've done already with Don, with that, I don't know what the name of that solicitation was, but I think the governor released a...
Calawea's application that I provided for the council on the back end.
Yep.
Yeah, so similar to that, we provide the technical support and apply for those grants. And then there's, finally, the Monterey Bay Community Power is coming out with a long-term loan program next year that'll provide up to 50% of the funding for all resiliency projects for critical services. So there's a number of ways that we think we can help fund and support this project and make it economically feasible for the city. I won't get into that right now. This project itself, roughly speaking, just to provide two-day resilience for well number six, probably looking at actual project cost near $800,000, sounds like a big number, it is. It's because battery technology is rather expensive. But as you see, we're, you know, hoping that we get these rebates and grants that we're talking about, reduce the total cost of the project, maybe take advantage of some low-rate loans. And after all that said and done, it's actually, the project pays for itself over time and the city has resiliency, it's zero-carbon, saves money on their electricity bills, and you have the resiliency you were looking for. So economically feasible, it is, technically feasible, yes. Like I said in the beginning, the ask here is digging into this. Is this something that we want to pursue, is it look viable? And, you know, to take the next step and actually dig into the engineering and see if it's doable. So...
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So now I have an ask of you.
Yeah.
Who does all that? Put that last slide up. Who does that? You or us?
We do.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay, so as I understand it from your presentation, it's primarily solar that you're looking at?
It's solar and battery, yeah.
Solar and battery technology.
Yeah.
So that means solar panels. Who will pay for the solar panels, the installation, where they go, all that stuff? You guys do?
So it depends. In this case, it's a combination of grants, rebates, potentially the city taking out loans. There's this 1% municipal loan program, there's the NBC program.
Which sounds like a whole lot of stuff...
It's a lot.
...to pursue. Who pursues it?
We pursue it all, on your behalf, yeah.
You do?
If this was a project that the city was interested in pursuing, we would make it happen as far as developing it, understanding the engineering, understanding the costs, and then we'd find a way to help pay for it. If that meant, we have investors that are interested in funding these projects, we also have connections to get these grants and rebates. We understand how to administer those applications and how to get that money. So on your behalf, we would actually develop all of that.
So really then, therefore, the ask is to the city, to this council, should you, and I don't know if the ask is tonight, Leslie?
No, it's just a presentation.
Yeah, just a presentation.
But the ask that we might anticipate is, do you, city wants to, want us, Green Power, to go pursue this on your behalf? Yes or no?
Okay, yes.
Is that a fair way of characterizing it or unfair?
Well, it's not an unfair way of characterizing it at all. I think that your focus is on this specific presentation and Green Power is looking at what it means to be a green city, which is beyond a single well. So I think that yes and no. Green Power would like to talk with the city more formally about what it means to be a green city, and that's above and beyond a single well. Mint is here tonight to talk to you about pretty much, I think, a single well, if I understand.
Well, and it was just for discussion, council.
To give you an idea.
If this is something, for example, should we have a, I hope to have a strategic planning meeting in February to talk about our budget for the next fiscal year. And this could be something that we could talk about as well as other projects and put them all out on the table at one time, but we can keep this in the back of our mind. And now we know approximately what the cost was. I see articles all the time, and there's a small city in New Hampshire that has five of these, they look like commercial trucks, they're actually battery storage and the whole city can run, you know, without being connected to the grid. And it's an ideal, if not a utopia, but this is just one way to get there. So it's just an idea. I think the council at the last meeting was interested in knowing what the potential was.
And the other thing I would like to add is the resiliency. What are we going to do when PG&E shuts off the power for three days? And they have, in some parts of California, two weeks ago.
Some parts of San Juan.
Three days, that tank runs out of water. What if there's a fire? How do we fight that fire? So there's a lot of other considerations other than just...
Cost.
Cost and even, even though I'm a fan of cutting out greenhouse emissions to as low as we can possibly go or zero, there's still other reasons even more pressing, in my opinion, you know, with PG&E acting very flaky. We need a backup system and we don't really have one.
I have a question. Do you have testimonies of other, like you mentioned the Diocese of Monterey?
Absolutely.
And I know I worked for the Diocese and I knew I'd seen you... And, and I know I worked for the diocese, and I knew I'd seen you before. But I understand they're very happy-
Small world.
Uh, with all of the, the, uh, solar panels that they have been installing in all of their churches.
Yeah, we've saved them an enormous amount of money.
Yeah.
Um, and so they are very happy. Plus, yeah, their, their impact on their carbon footprint is immense as an entire diocese. Yeah, I think we're up to about 15 different parishes, churches and schools that have all gone solar. They've installed LED lighting, they've upgraded their energy systems, and they are happy as far, as far as I understand it, yeah, very happy.
Is there anybody else?
That we've worked with?
Yeah, that you've worked, that, that are happy.
Absolutely, I mean, Granite Rock, we're working with them now. We just finished their project at their headquarters, we're working with them on another project at the quarry, and-
City of San Juan, there were a couple of-
San Juan Health Foundation.
San Juan Health Foundation.
The only one in the nation.
The only one in the nation, yeah, that's, that's us. I think, yeah, there's projects that Mint has done that are unique, that have not been done. We often go after the more challenging projects that people won't take on, just because that's what we like to do.
So i- if I can put this in a nutshell, and correct me if I'm wrong, Green Power is resiliency for the whole entire city. Mint is a contractor that we would contract with for something specific like the well, or the whole entire city, if we so choose you as a contractor.
Yes, I think, I mean, Mint is, if, if Green Power represents broad strategy, Mint is the tactical implementer of that strategy. We could do, take the whole city, that's probably, you know, bigger-
Right.
To chew off at this point, but, um, yes.
Concept, concept deliverable.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's a good way to, to put it.
In a nutshell.
And so, yeah, Green Power, they're out there, you know, talking to everybody. They're the ones that brought us into San Juan, they brought us into Granite Rock. They're out there talking to people, advocating for this, um, carbon, uh, carbon-neutral future.
Absolutely, I think it's phenomenal.
And it is.
Yeah.
And so we, you know, Mint has an ethos, the triple bottom line, right? It's people, planet, profit. All three are important when we're making decisions like this. So, you know, what, how do we serve the people and the community? How do we serve the planet? And how do we keep it economically viable? Because that's the bottom line. So those are the three things we look at when we're looking at projects. And that's what we start by doing, is looking at those three things, checking those boxes, and then say, okay, this is the project we need to do.
Amazing.
So Mr. City Manager, if this is informational only, then where do we go from here?
I think it's interesting to keep in touch with this technology and the way it moves and the way the cost efficiencies change. The Monterey Bay Cooperative Power did come up in the middle of this crisis. It was an email from Tom Hibashi saying, hey, we're thinking of using a big chunk of our reserves to help cities with the critical facilities. We made sure that water and wastewater and our fire department and City Hall were part of those critical facilities. We submitted that list to them. It's a pretty reasonable price, just to put it on generator, but ultimately, this would be the goal. So this would be like a three-year or a five-year plan that we could establish as we work towards our next few capital improvement budgets through the next few years. So I just wanted to introduce this. It's something that's new to me, and it's emerging as technology is changing so fast with the battery storage. So I thought it would be a good time to, to give everyone an update, and the, the time was ripe. We were all, we were all traumatized from the PG&E outages and the aromas and likewise.
But, but is, was your purpose in putting it on the agenda to ask us if we want to continue the conversation?
Well, certainly, and, and as I suggested-
If I say yes, let's, let's continue this.
Right, and as I suggested-
I think you got a general consensus, yes.
We'll put this on the list for a strategic planning retreat, and we'll, we'll talk about that after the first of the year. That would be my, my goal.
Perfect.
All right.
And then, and it was the council that asked that this come back, you deserve the credit, so.
Yeah, Les is just reminding me, this entire region around San Juan Batista is what's called an opportunity zone. There are some opportunities within that opportunity zone to increase the economic viability of these kind of projects, especially at a larger scale. If we're talking about full city resiliency, large solar farms. The fact that it's an opportunity zone means there are investors out there who are more attracted to these kind of projects.
And you showed some pretty re-, near-future imminent critical dates for some of these fundings to become available.
Yes.
So thinking about this in the, in the now.
Near future.
Yeah, and to the, to the point of, yeah, how, you know, moving this forward, we are in a po-, at a point, yeah, where there is this nexus of all these things, right? There's this emergency happening, there's this need for critical resilience amidst that emergency. And there's also this rapid deflation of pricing on these kind of systems. And there's also all these incentives and grants and rebates available and opportunity zones that are all coming together to make these things more economically viable for a city to do them. So it is, yeah, a, a good time to do that.
Very timely, absolutely. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue the conversation.
Oh, yes.
Sounds like a conversation worth continuing.
All right, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is presentation of cannabis rules and regulations by Victor Gomez. Could you identify yourself, sir?
No, thank you. I'd like to go unidentified. Honorable Mayor Flores, members of the council, Victor Gomez, with Pinnacle Strategy. I was your consultant with, uh, working through your ad hoc committee. About two years ago, we initiated the process of developing a cannabis ordinance for the city of San Juan Batista. I believe it was June of 2018 when you adopted the ordinance. That ordinance approval was contingent upon the sales tax passing in the city of San Juan, which it did last year, in November of last year. And so here we are, finally, and thank you, Don, for reaching out and allowing us to put the bow on this, on this cannabis program. So I'll go through the rules and regulations today. Your ordinance has been approved. I know we're going to have a discussion, a bit about that, maybe potentially making some changes to that ordinance. But tonight, I'm going to focus specifically on your rules and regulations, your application. And then, God willing, next month, you'll be prepared to set your tax structure for all of those operations, which include testing, sale, retail sale, dispensary, cultivation, manufacturing, and so on. And so that action will take place next month, setting that tax rate, repealing your ban. You do have a current ban on cannabis operations in the, in the city limits. So that will also have to take place next month. And then I think we should be prepared to accept applications from applicants likely around the February timeframe. We'll review those applications when we get to that point, and we'll work closely with, with the city manager and, and staff in that process. And as you can tell by looking at the application, this is not, you're not applying to work at McDonald's. This is a fairly cumbersome process, but cannabis operators understand that. They've, those that have been successfully operating and are interested in operating in your city have probably followed very similar criteria to get to the point of conditional use permit approval, and more importantly, regulatory approval for cannabis operations. So you have the rules and regulations in front of you, along with the application. I'll highlight some of those, so Laura, we could go ahead and get started. So the application form is a form that's attached, again, to your, to your packet. A fairly, you know, detailed application. A lot of this stuff is also requirements from the state of California under their cannabis program that they have to comply with anyway. But we have those for our review here locally. The type of, I'll go through the application here really quickly, but the, the type of facility they're hoping to operate within your industrial zoning, and, um, uh, general information about the business structure, information about ownership. Obviously, we want to make sure we know who's investing in these operations and when that, where that money is coming from. Again, the type of operation, whether it's a partnership, an LLC, whatever it may be. Information, so we can conduct their background. One of the requirements in your ordinance, and one of the requirements also semi-redundant in your rules and regulations, is a, a background check of all ownership that has a 10% interest in the operation or 10% or greater interest in that operation. And so under that application, that will be a requirement. Obviously, we want to make sure that they don't fall under the criteria. That also falls under the criteria of state of California, which disqualifies them from operating a cannabis business. I don't want to get ahead of myself here, but I know your city manager has had discussions with the Hollister Police Department, and I believe the Sheriff's Department as well. The Hollister, the city of Hollister is, is ahead in their program. They implemented their ordinance in December of 2016. So about a year later, they accepted their first applicant, and now they do have operators within the city limits. And I believe some of you may have visited them. I know Don did have an opportunity to visit one of the vertically integrated operators in the city of Hollister. So we are talking to the PD about potentially having them conduct the background for these applicants. They're very well experienced, and I've had the, the pleasure of working with them as well. Just so you're aware, the county is in the process of reviewing their first batch of applications. They do not allow retail in unincorporated San, uh, San Juan County, but they have quite a bit of applications for manufacturing and cultivation as well. So again, within your application, these are the types of items we're going to be asking them for. Their, you know, LLC documents, who's included in the operations, so on and so forth. You could go ahead and, let's skip a slide here. So section two, that is your, sorry, I just went over your application. When somebody's ready to apply to the city of San Juan Batista, they're first going to submit an eligibility application fee of $2,500 and 30, $2,536 for, for initial review of their background, allowing me also the ability to review their business documents and really allow them to apply in a first phase, so, you know, candidly, so we don't have to review the rest of their application if they, if they don't qualify under the background check. Councilmember DeVries?
Yeah, Victor, remind me, since it's been a while, are you on board to help review these applications with the city? And if so, what's the arrangement between us?
So my contract actually, my contract was specifically only for the, uh, the ordinance, the rules and regs, and app, application, and also your nexus that determine these fees. These, these fees are determined as a cost recovery, right? To, to pay for the work that, that we'll be doing. Within that fee would be worked in a fee for me to review these applications, if you so wish. We don't have that set in concrete, Don and I have had those discussions.
So we have a con-, we have a contract and a proposal, and then, then the offer to Hollister PD to use part of these fees to pay for their background check. That's a big part of the review.
So you have a proposal from Pinnacle Strategy to city San Juan Batista for Victor and the Pinnacle Strategy to review these things on an ongoing basis?
Right.
And if that was approved by, that needs council approval, I'm assuming?
Depends on the dollar amount, I'm happy to bring it back.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm not saying it needs to be brought back, but that's the idea, is that Pinnacle Strategy, Victor, would be reviewing these things as they come in?
Right.
Yeah.
Going forward?
Yeah, and a majority of the component of the application, some of the work will obviously have to be reviewed by your planning staff or building staff, especially when it comes to site plan and compliance with, with building code.
Right.
But aside from that, mostly everything else, again, aside from that and the, the background check, would be, would be reviewed by myself. And the good thing, again, is my fee would be significantly less than what the applicants are going to be paying for. So really, the fee was set, the total fee is, as you can see there, is close to $7,000, which is pretty average for, for a jurisdiction to, to charge about that much. But we just wanted to make sure that we weren't overcharging the applicant, and certainly not overcharging. We don't want the city to subsidize any, any cannabis applications. So, um, again, we, we would go through the app, through the initial phase of background and business structure review. If they pass that first phase, they would then enter phase two, which would be the application processing and permit issuances as well. And then, on a, on an ongoing basis, your nexus study that we put together includes a, a fee of $95.94 for your annual review. Anytime your code enforcement officer or anybody else goes out there and has to do work, they will be charged for it, right? If there is a complaint about the facility, your code enforcement officer would go out there, conduct a review, and they would essentially be, you would have the ability to recover those costs for that, for that review. Stage, I can go ahead, Laura. Stage one, applicant and facility eligibility is what we discussed. Sorry, I got a little bit ahead of myself here. You could skip one, Laura. And under applicant and facility evaluation scoring, I want to spend a little bit of time on that just really quickly. And that is really the, the scoring system that we've put together for you. So we wanted to make sure that every time we re-, we, we review an application, we want to make sure that we use the same criteria with each application and keep that information, you know, obviously internal for our reference and our review. We want to be fair, and we want to set the same standards for everybody. That's why we have this criteria for them to follow. This isn't going to be a competitive process, as some other jurisdictions have adopted competitive processes, which means you open a, a small window, a small period for them to accept applications. You then close the, the period, and then you review applications. I don't think that's going to be the case here in San Juan Batista, and I'm glad you took that route to do this, because candidly, you only have, I believe, four parcels that fall within your industrial zoning. That being the case, I'm likely not going to be bombarded with 10 applications at the same time. I'm sure some interested parties would like that to happen, and, you know, and obviously yourself, because we're hoping that this could generate some significant tax revenue for your city. And so we will be going through the, the stage two process, which is scoring the applications and making sure that they're following the application accordingly. You can go ahead and move on. So cannabis facilities and regulations, what we're going to review under the application will be, obviously, security, right? Alarm systems, closed-circuit television that could be accessed via online, uh, security, right? Depending on who's going to be covering, whether it's the city, the sheriff's department. Right now, you have a contract for sheriff's services. You may want to, you know, talk about that with the sheriff's department at some time. But city staff will have access to those cameras at any given time. So if Don, you know, is hearing about something going on, he could log in at any time. And actually, at that time, whether it's, he's a city manager, so whether it's midnight and he's at home and something's going wrong, right? He's laughing.
Really wrong, really wrong, yeah.
You know, he'll have that ability to look at those cameras remotely through a cell phone or, or computer. Window coverings, that's obviously going to be- That's-
Midnight Express, yes.
Windows, obviously, that's going to be important too, especially with retail sites. We want to make sure that depending on the operation, sometimes you do want to, you know, obviously, you want to have protective windows. You don't want a, a window that you could just break through. So there'll be security filming on, that's going to be a requirement on all the windows, roofs. We want to prevent as much penetration into the operations as possible. Visibility is also very important. You do currently have some development out there, but in some of the zoning that is undeveloped, this is really going to give us an opportunity to work toward having buildings in the proper places for visibility purposes. Fire suppression systems, that's certainly going to be important in, in all buildings, following the California Building Code. But most importantly, when you're in manufacturing of cannabis, you know, you do use flammable liquids, and it's, so it's going to be important that, that you have the adequate fire suppression system. Entries and exits, doors, obviously, we want to make sure that they're properly latched and, and closed appropriately for emergencies and certainly security reasons as well. Go ahead. General operating requirements, we'll entitle, you know, a few things, but making sure that we have a manager on-site all the time while the operation is, while you have employees in the building. Under your ordinance, you do have a window of operation, so- Under your ordinance, you do have a window of operation, so you can only be open from a certain time. It's been a while since I've reviewed your ordinance, but I want to say it's probably between maybe 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM, somewhere around there. And so, during that timeframe, when they propose to be operating, if it's a retail site, obviously, they're going to have, you know, public access, but even if they're not, they still should have a supervisor or manager on site, whether they're manufacturing, cultivating, and so on. Inventory and tracking systems, that's very important for everything, right? You don't want to make, you want to make sure that you don't have any product missing out of any of these facilities. Any leakage of product, it does have to be reported to Public Safety, to the city and Public Safety for their review, so they could do an audit of that. And that actually does have to be reported to the State of California as well. The State of California has also adopted a track and trace system, which is important, especially in cultivation, when you're moving raw product over to a manufacturer for their use, whether they're doing pre-rolls or edibles or whatever it may be, they have to be purchasing that product from a tracked source or cultivator to make sure that, obviously, the raw product, the cultivation product is being tested and then moved legally to the manufacturer and so on, from the manufacturer to the retailer or distributor as well. And then, signs, obviously, you don't want a glaring LED 12-foot-tall marijuana leaf on 156, right? So, signage is going to be important. That's not allowed, by the way.
11 feet tall?
11 feet tall, I'm sure it would be fine.
Not too high.
But none of that is actually allowed through California law, anyway. So. Odor control devices, that's certainly, you know, something that was heavily discussed. Councilmember De Vries, with you in the form of council member, and I know Councilmember Freeman as well, during the process is odor mitigation. So, we do require them to have an odor mitigation plan in their application, so your entire city doesn't smell like a large skunk just.
Not the entire city, but even neighboring parcels. You cannot smell this thing.
Correct.
Because that's the number one complaint I've heard, is odor.
Yeah, yeah. So, we, you know, carbon scrubbers, citrus misters, there's a variety of ways to neutralize the smell, and so that'll be one of the requirements within that.
One of the things that the report mentioned was the flooring. They talked about gravel flooring versus concrete. Is there any way that we can make them have concrete so that it would be more?
So, currently, Mary, the, actually, in the ordinance, not in the rules and regs, but in the actual ordinance, and I think we'll get into that in.
Is this a discussion item later in the?
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll bring it up, but I can certainly answer that question, because this is a non-action item and it does pertain to this. So, currently, your ordinance actually requires a concrete foundation for cultivation for all operations, essentially. And so, even if you're in a greenhouse, that's not necessarily common, right? To have a concrete floor like that for a greenhouse, but that'll be left to you to decide later today, and you could give City Manager Reynolds some direction on where you want to go with that. But originally, when that ordinance was adopted, it did include that requirement.
I was just worried about the odor seeping out.
You won't have, the odor wasn't the driving factor in adding that language to it. I think security had a bit to do with it, but more importantly, it was environmental runoff, right? From the water being used for the cultivation. And so, again, we'll discuss that in shortly, but that is something that you'll want to evaluate and up to you, obviously, if you want to keep that as a legislative body, to keep that as a requirement. Oh, go ahead, Laura, you can actually go on. And while, actually, that wraps it up. So, that was sort of, you know, obviously, a very concentrated amount of information. Your rules and regs do expand a bit on that. But again, these are operating procedures, your application, your operating procedures that you're going to want your applicants to follow as they continue to operate once they have regulatory approval. And so, there are a couple of modifications that I am asking the council to consider if you do move forward with adopting, with adopting the rules and regs. And I apologize for the oversight, City Manager Reynolds, but originally, when we discussed any kind of cannabis operations in the City of San Juan Baptista, Prop 64 had just passed, right? Recreational cannabis use in California became legal in November of 2016. You're able to grow cannabis in your backyard anytime after that, but the sale and so on of cannabis in 2017 was really the rollout year. So, we actually had talked about San Juan Baptista maybe being medical only originally. That is not the case, so your ordinance allows for recreational cannabis to be dispensed. Medical cannabis could, medical cannabis is actually, medical cannabis cars, and medical cannabis is still being used because California law allows for medical cannabis to be used with patients between the ages of 18 and 21. Recreational cannabis only applies to those 21 and older. So, if you're between the ages of 18 and 21 and do happen to want to use cannabis and you have a medical reason for that use, you can still purchase medical cannabis. But that language was stricken from the ordinance, so I'm asking you to strike that language from the rules and regs. It is in your rules and regs that you're seeing right now. So, I do, once you take action, here in the next couple of minutes, I will be asking for a couple of small changes to be made, Debbie, that need to be made. It's actually like three or four references to medical cannabis that probably should be removed.
Victor, anybody that has a medical reason to buy the cannabis, do they have to have a prescription from a doctor, or do they just say, "I'm sick and I need this"?
Yeah, they do have to have authority from.
Just a letter. It just requires a letter from the doctor.
Yeah, but it's from a physician.
Yes.
That's only through 18 and through 21.
And your ordinance does not allow that. So, your ordinance, as drafted, only allows the sale of cannabis in San Juan Baptista to those 21 and over.
So, then that's for recreational?
Correct. Yeah.
When Prop 64 passed, the difference between medical and recreational became almost nonexistent. Think about it.
Yes, so, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt Councilmember Freeman, but you are correct. It happened in Colorado, it happened in Oregon, happened in Washington. They, most of the states originally started with medical programs only, right? Like California did in 1996, and that really allowed cannabis to be used in California for medical purposes. But once recreational cannabis in Colorado became legal, I believe in 2012, those 21 and over did not even need to go get a card anymore, right? Because all you have to do is be 21. If you walk into a cannabis retail facility, likely throughout the state of California, as long as you're 21 and over, all you have to do is show a picture ID, go up to the front desk, register with that retailer, and you could purchase any cannabis you want, right? It's packaged with, you know, it has to be under 100 grams of THC potency within the packaging, but there really isn't a limit of, really isn't a necessary limit that's in place. Some cities do, some cities don't, but you could essentially just walk in with just your ID and purchase the product now. And so, there's been about an 80% decline in Colorado with medical licenses.
So, Mayor and City Council, it might be appropriate to go ahead and, if it's okay, to consider Item 5A, adopting the rules and regulations following the presentation. We had talked about that, and Mayor, I forgot neglect to mention that to you, but it might be more efficient to actually consider the regulations now, if that's okay.
If that's going to be the case, Mayor, can I just add the changes, the proposed changes, Don, if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, under section, under the scoring section, under H.
Page 93, 93 in the agenda. What page do you have?
What page is it?
See the page numbers on the corner? 93?
Hang on, hang on.
92?
So, under HI, sorry, H1, which is an odor management plan including detailed description of ventilation system used in medical cannabis, we need the word "medical" stricken from that? And I'm sorry, I don't have your page number because I'm using a different document.
Sorry, can you say that one more time?
Yeah, it's under the scoring system.
I'm there, uh-huh.
If you go to H, and then H.
93.
H1?
Is that it?
Or, excuse me, is that I? Yeah, that's actually still under I. So, I, you see the word "medical", that needs to be stricken from.
Oh, I see what you're talking about.
No, why does it have to be stricken?
Because you don't have, you don't bifurcate medical and recreational cannabis in your ordinance. So, for consistency, yeah, technically, in San Juan, there's no such thing as medical cannabis.
Cannabis for everyone.
If you do have.
Medical or not?
And Councilmember Edge, if I could just add really quick, if you do have a medical card, you could certainly still walk into a facility in San Juan Baptista and purchase cannabis, it's just not needed.
An 18-year-old can?
No. So, between, your ordinance actually bans the sale of any kind of cannabis to anybody 21 or under.
Regardless of medical or?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So, that is the first medical, the striking of the medical language, and then, and then under Section 4, under cannabis facilities and regulations, if you look at, if you look at B2, sufficient cameras, angles and observation and lighting to allow facial feature identification of persons in interior and exterior areas for medical cannabis or medical, we just need those two "medical" stricken from the rules and regs that were presented tonight.
Section 4.
Yeah, under alarms, closed circuit television, and you go down to B.
Got it.
And then, B2.
B2, copy that.
And you'll see sufficient cameras, where that language begins, so we just need the two "medical" terms stricken from that.
Section 4.
B2.
There's two small i's.
I understand that fact. I'm looking for the word itself, thank you very much.
Looking at 41.
Okay.
Yeah, we got it.
And so, those are the changes.
Just the three of them.
Yeah, those changes are.
Understood.
So, no, I don't have the second one yet. Page 94, almost halfway down the page, double I.
What page?
Page 94.
Medical is used twice there, so, yeah, there we go. Yeah, so those are the only two changes.
Section 4, 1B2, there's two "medicals" here that are, he's asking to be stricken.
And really, it's just for consistency, just so it complies with the ordinance. Are there any other questions I can answer? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Victor.
Thank you, Victor.
Speakers.
You need to have the council agree to change to, you're 5A now, you need to have public comment.
For 5A, yes. We haven't gone there yet.
We're requesting to go there.
Well, I hate to have people sitting here all day, I mean, all night, to present and then have to wait some more. So, we have a report from the city library that I'd like to get out of the way before we move on.
Okay.
Is that okay with you guys? If not, we can do whatever you want.
Let's just finish up cannabis.
All right. Sorry, Rochelle. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to action items. Item 5A, adopt rules, regulations and application for cannabis facilities. Staff report from City Manager, Don Reynolds.
I think I have nothing else to add. We do describe the process in here and relying, hopefully, on the City of Hollister to do our background checks and pinnacle strategies to administer our applications for us, and with changes in pinnacle strategies that are so submitted, I'm ready for public comment and deliberation.
Any discussion from the council?
Would ongoing inspections basically be done by our code enforcement?
Yes, and he's currently working with the county on the same, on the same training and so forth.
So, he would be possibly working an extra day or two or?
With the revenue to offset the cost, yeah.
Why are we going through the city instead of the Sheriff's Department?
They've got quite an efficient process that they're doing at lower cost. They've already got the experience and the process down, so.
Okay, any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, we'll open it for public comment.
Rachel Ponse.
Rachel.
I just, I have questions and I want clarification on the lifting of the ban, of the cannabis ban for the city. Are we still talking about the original locations of only it being on the industrial sites and not within the city limits, you know?
Yes.
Downtown?
That's right.
Okay. We're still on that?
Yes.
Yes.
The answer is yes.
We'll be allowed there, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Any other public comment? If not, we'll move on to possible action.
Nice question.
Adopt rules, regulations and application form for cannabis facilities. Chair, want to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the rules, regulations and applications for cannabis facilities.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And now, we call for the question. All the favor respond by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Now, do we go back to the presentations and reports? Thank you. Now, since we've done 5A, we will move back to 4C.
Thank you.
Okay, Rochelle, you're up.
You did not check this beforehand. So, hello, I'm Rochelle. I work at the library, and I just finished a 19-page report for this California State Library, which we do every year. We have over 9,000 items in our collection, and with the help of volunteers, we have completely moved that collection multiple times as we've gotten new furniture. You can see how different it looks. With volunteers, we performed a full inventory of everything because the barcodes were out of date when we updated to Kohak. They all got mixed up and weren't working, so they are now working. With Public Works, we, they placed the winning bid on the $60 worth of wooden furniture to replace this metal shelving that we had previously, and then they helped dispose of the old furniture, so it has a much more prestigious look, I guess. And then, with staff from City Hall, they helped us pick the furniture, the shades, coordinating a fireplace insert, keeping our website up to date and helping with our community children's party every year. Todd has done that twice, so, thank you, Todd. In, with the capital improvement funds, we used, we bought these, we have two laptops and an iPad. This, you can check out this laptop if you need it, and refreshed the interior.
Lovely.
With a new community table and a little fireplace chatting area. We did use one of our existing card catalogs as an in-table.
That was very cool.
We have, I reduced the number that we reported for cardholders because we were using everybody that had ever applied for a card, and it's really only supposed to be the most recent three years. We're seeing a lot of new residents apply for cards, and we have a lot of students that applied specifically for our summer reading program last year, which we coordinated with the school in their dual emergent program. So, we have, we went from 20 Spanish titles to 60 for chapter books. And I just applied for a grant yesterday, roughly $8,000 to increase our Spanish emergent readers, because those were a very tired collection. One other reminder here is that we're almost out of these library cards. I'm going to have to order more. have to order more. I'm not sure if I should order the same thing, or get something a little, uh, nicer with some, um, images on it or something. Um, the other thing with the cards is that we're working with MOBAC. Uh, you provide funds in our budget every year for MOBAC, and I'd like to have that continue, because, um, for one, they have provided us with over thirteen thousand dollars in grant monies already in the last twelve months, and they're also working on a shared catalog amongst, uh, I believe it's nine libraries, so that our patrons would be able to check out books from other libraries without actually having to get hurt at another library. So we don't have to join them, we just have to work together with them. And we're already working together with them through interlibrary loans, um, so that helps. Um, we also have over seven thousand people that walk through the door every year with reference questions, joining any of our groups, and, uh, participating in our community. I've seen a couple of volunteers in here earlier that, uh, have been helping me throughout the year, so, uh, they come in just to chat or whatever. Um, also, uh, one of the things I put on the report was after the shooting in Gilroy, we had a lot of patrons coming in in those weeks that followed, uh, just to have kind of a impromptu counseling session, and both Delia and I had firsthand experience at the, um, Gilroy Garlic Festival this, this year, so it helped us work through those scary moments as well. Um, this was our summer reading program, we had the kids do a bingo, and, um, this was one that really went to town with it. Um, they really only had to fill out one line, or column, and they ended up doing it all, so.
Sweet.
We had a couple that came back this way, and it was kinda neat to see them featured in Mission Village Voice this month for their reading habits, aside from the summer. Um, we had Joaquin Noreta come and give a talk at the auxiliary meeting. Um, Betty Leever came from, uh, the Learning Center, or Literacy Center, uh, which is right next to Windmill Market. Uh, later, she actually donated, uh, or not donated, she, uh, lent us some of her mission patches from her time at the city, so that our, um, July display was, uh, a little bit more full. Uh, we also hosted the Deanza Trail Exhibit, uh, for a little over two months, uh, Mary and Rick came and saw that. Um, nobody tried on the chaps or got on the horse there, but, um, it was a good exhibit. And then, um, we have eighty-six programs that we hosted this year, which was up from five the previous year. And, um, that includes storytimes where we celebrated, um, different authors, uh, different titles and, and ways of interacting with the stories, and then often you'll see the kids out there with a parachute at the end, uh, playing. We also expanded out into the park grounds to do some of the activities, 'cause the room is kind of small sometimes. So we had the twentieth anniversary of the, uh, release of the Harry Potter books, the Halloween party came over from the community center, and we had a tea party, and, uh, the Jim West memorial. Uh, we also did something different, we also have, uh, host paint nights, and those have been, um, well-attended. The, uh, the twenty-five-dollar fee goes directly to the artists, and, uh, everybody seems to have a lot of fun in there. So, the report is twenty, uh, nineteen pages, and it'll say all these kinds of activities that we did, so I just kinda filled it with pictures, so you guys could see what we do.
Great job, Rochelle.
Thank you.
Great, great job. Thank you, Rochelle.
We're lucky to have you.
Wait, folks, I need to take a short break.
I, I just have one question. You talked about overdrive, sorry.
Yes.
Uh, in the, in the, um, packet, um, yeah, I'm not sure I saw it up there.
Is this a possibility or an actuality? Is it possible? Only two thousand dollars, it's a starting fee of, uh, five hundred, and then continuing fees of fifteen hundred. Uh, when I did it, uh, for myself, I, I have had that app on my phone for a while, um, things that I wanted took eight weeks to a year in order to get. They were on a back order because of the way that a lot of the publishers work, you're only allowed one book per library, and the way we're able to get it at that fifteen hundred dollar cost is to join with other libraries. Uh, Watsonville and Hollister are part of that consortium.
Oh, nice.
We would be on that same program.
Yep.
And we would have to wait a minimum of eight weeks to a year to get popular titles or even some of the, um, older titles.
Uh, yeah, I've had it on my phone for a long time, and there are some that take a while, but some are pop right up.
Right, yeah.
So it's really nice to have that in, in concert with, uh, Audible.
Yes, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, cool, awesome.
I have another question about who you prefer the best author.
I have to, you know. The man's wanted to get done in forty-five minutes.
I'm just giving them a hard time.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Sorry, but we're gonna have to take a short little break. Personal break for me, sorry.
Oh, all right.
We'll take a short little break, we'll get back to the best authors later.
The audit, as I stated in my monthly report, we'll do the audit in December and then mid-year budget adjustments in January and then strategic planning in February and we'll be off into our new budget.
Sweet.
So, we're holding our own.
Do you have any other things to report?
Not on finance.
Okay, well, about this regular city manager report.
And it's there in writing for you, so I won't go into it in too much detail. I did leave a sheet regarding the fire engine to show you the community that it's going to in Guatemala and I thought that was really endearing. I just received that before our council meeting tonight. That's really cool. The fire engine is not legal to drive in California and it still, as they say, runs and pumps, so thank you, Leslie, for that suggestion.
Amazing project. Thanks for facilitating that.
Making that work. Again, I did mention the library and all the fantastic work that Rochelle does. That's really exciting to see come through. There's a lot of activity waiting to happen in parks with the Prop 68 grant coming up. And I did apply for the $200,000 grant from Cal OES to help us with our emergency generator system. We have a draft response ready for the EPA. They've sent us a letter. It's due in two weeks, so I have both the team on the water and wastewater master plan helping me put that together, so that'll be done in a timely way. And our well six has been operational now for three weeks, so.
Well done.
That feels good.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, I really have to commend the city manager. He's doing a heck of a good job.
Yeah, I appreciate you digging in with both feet and running man.
He even came to the coast park. Okay, 4F, the Portland City Council appointing to regional organizations and committees. Do we have any reports?
I don't have any.
Sure, I got a couple of reports. Ambag met last week and we talked about extra grant money going to jurisdictions. Our extra grant money will come through Cog and that's coming up for the 2020 and 2021 years. It's not about the housing element that we just did. It's about the next one that's coming up, the one that's gonna scare everybody because they're gonna get big numbers.
Bigger numbers.
Yeah, bigger numbers. Anyway, they also talked about some of the new rules and regulations that are going in. For example, ADUs are now permitted everywhere. You can literally, let me backtrack, after January 1, you can literally apply for one. It does not have to go before the planning commissions. It does not have, it's almost administratively done, so it's gonna be kind of a different world because there's a lot of places, not San Juan, but a lot of other jurisdictions where ADUs were not favored and so.
Bless your bones.
They have to change their way of thinking, let's just put it that way. Also, last week, we had an intergovernmental committee meeting. We talked basically about the feasibility study for a new improved county library and then we had a party for outgoing city manager Bill Libera for the city of Hollister. Okay, it was the second last day. And then Saturday, I went to a meeting for the, put on by the Coalition for a New Community Library and Resource Center. That's what we call the county library and they need a new, they do need a new one. Their space is cramped, it's old, it's kind of, you know, not very spiffy and their programs are literally, with kids, are literally out the door. I mean, they're just jammed in there like sardines and it's, you know, so it's gonna be up to the board supervisors if they ever wanna do a new library and.
What's the budget estimate for the new library, John?
They, the, let me take it slow. They granted $35,000 out of the present library budget to do a feasibility study for how big. It's gonna depend if they want a 20,000 square foot or a 60,000 square foot library, if you want so many bells and whistles or not, but it's anywhere between 30 and 60 million bucks.
Between 30 and 60 million dollars? Paid for by Hollister, San Juan, and McAllen?
Well, that is to be determined and what I would say is, I personally do not think it's San Juan. We should be kinda islanded out because we have our own library and we pay our own money for our own library. You know, it does a great job and.
As we just heard.
Yeah, as we just heard. And, you know, I don't think we should pay for, right now Hollister and the county are having a big fight over paying for the library anyway. It's basically a library that serves the city of Hollister. And do you know how much money the city of Hollister pays for use of that library?
How much?
$15,000 a year.
Oh, my gosh.
So, that's, that's literally, you know, the.
Peanuts.
Peanuts, yeah, yeah, so, so they have to get to some sort of equitable share, in my opinion. They have to get to some sort of equitable sharing position to make it all right, you know, and we'll see what happens from there.
Okay, anyone else?
Water Resources Association, San Bernardino County, met presentations. Sean Novak and I have been doing water awareness, conservation, and education in San Bernardino County high schools and a reminder to all in San Juan Batista to use the Water Resources Association for resources such as irrigation issues, lawn replacements, toilet replacements, water softener replacements, leaks, and other conservation needs. And if you have any questions on that, you can call the Water Resources Association at, look at the screen below, 831-637-4378.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, I attended a meeting with Senator Callejero regarding the, the roundabout, or turn of, what do you call it, things?
Roundabout.
Roundabout on 25 and 156. We wrote a letter, Cog wrote a letter to the county supervisors stating that we are against it. And we also, that's why we brought Senator Callejero, we met with her, discussed some ideas and her suggestion, she's gonna try to facilitate that, is to have District Four and Five meet together on this project, representatives from both districts, because District Four is Santa Clara County and they're.
You're talking about Caltrans district.
Yes, Caltrans, yeah, Caltrans district. Anyway, and we're working on that.
Nice.
The others, I did a presentation at San Andres Class of City Government and I just explained what city government is about, how it functions, how you can get elected and that kind of stuff. And it was very well received. I was, the teachers were surprised that I could hold their attention for 45 minutes without them being all rambunctious and stuff. She goes, I don't know how you did it, but you did it. And I said, well, I just talked to them, you know. So, anyway, it was a good, good turnout. Lot of, lot of talent in those kids, they just need guidance.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Anyway, that's it. Now we'll move to Strategic Plan Committee Report. Is that available? Okay, Todd?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, good evening. Todd Kennedy, your city planner. Also, I serve as secretary on the Strategic Planning Committee. Just gonna go ahead and give a quick overview. We did meet back on November 7 and we actually had a guest presentation who is proposing community art here in town. His name is Philip Orobuena and he gave a guest presentation to us. We are inviting him back as more of a discussion and action item. He is proposing to do community art on the underpass of 156 and Washington Street, underneath the street down in there, paint both sides. We've had conversations with Caltrans, he has had conversations with Caltrans as well. They seem to be agreeable to it. They, Caltrans provided their standards to us about what the art must possess. So, having said that, we will invite him back at a future meeting and hopefully be back on a future council item to review. That's all I have tonight.
To add to that, some of his work, you can see it in Hollister, you know, the different, actually the work on the VFW on the hall in the back, he did that mural and also the ones on, what's, what street, Third Street, that shows the different services.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's, and he's from San Juan Batista.
What's his name?
Phil Orobuena.
Phil Orobuena.
Yeah, so he's from San Juan and actually, he came to me, you know, he called me and we had a long talk and my question was, who's gonna pay for it? And he said, I will pay for it.
Wow.
So, there it is. I think we should help out. I mean, it's beautifying our city and he wants to do it because he's from San Juan, you know, he wants to put his art here, you know, so I think something we can really be proud of. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Okay, now we shall move to 5B, approved resolution allowing for partial release of faithful performance bond for the copper leaf subdivision. Can I report, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This report came originally in October, under the same title, and when we brought this report, we overlooked one particular type of bond that is separate from the 2.4 million dollar engineer's estimate that you see in the staff report. So, the resolution does address something that's called a monument bond. The monument bond is when you pay a surveyor to go out and establish monuments that mark the legal description of the property. And so, it's, what we're asking for tonight is that the council adopt a resolution cleaning that up and accepting that those monuments were properly placed and we have a letter that's from the surveyor that says that they were done appropriately. So, we did provide an updated resolution to that effect because it's 100% acceptance of that particular $6,000 bond. We're still leaving the 20% in place until the project is done and they're on the verge of pouring their last foundations there, so that's, that's good. Glad to see that project be completed. So, with that, I'll.
Any discussion?
I've got some questions.
Any further discussion?
I went out and I measured those monuments myself.
You did? I was hoping.
And I found one to be an inch and a quarter off.
It must be the San Andreas.
That's my silly way of saying it. Sounds like it's, it's black and white.
It's black and white.
Yeah.
All right, we'll open this issue for public comment. Do we have any public comment?
I have no cards.
We have no cards, we'll move on. Possible action.
Could you motion on that?
Motion to approve resolution 2019, allowing for release of monumentation bond for the copper leaf subdivision.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay. Who second?
Mary.
Mary. Any more discussion? If there's no more discussion, we'll call for the question. All in favor, respond by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Now we'll go to 5C, approved resolution, authorize amendment to the Hardy, Harris, Harrison Associates. Well, now I got new glasses, I mean, new eyes, I can't read.
You gotta get the brain to work again.
Well, I got new lenses, so people want to know. I had cataract surgery and I'm just barely healing from this, but now I need cheaters to read, which I didn't need before.
Where are they? There they are.
There they are.
Standing for the city manager, Don Reynolds.
Mayor and city council, when the budget was presented last, back in May, the acting city manager, Ed Tuas, recommended a part-time position of deputy city manager. I've been providing the status of recruiting for that position to the council since I started July 2. The intention was all good, but at $50 an hour, I was struggling to find competent help at the deputy city manager level. I complained to the acting city manager, I'd have to pay the deputy more than I was making, so. So, I've found some creative ways. We've had three months of salary savings because we haven't filled the position and it was suggested that we could look at public works or community development, whichever needed the help the most. And when I offered it to the retired public works director from Morgan Hill, he was making $100 an hour as a consultant, so he was willing to come on and take on our two critical studies that I was able to pay for through our enterprise fund and not touch these salary savings. And during that time, we had some community development projects coming forward as well as a lot of work on the housing element and the associate planner and I were just buried and frankly, trying to do technical work that we weren't qualified to do. And when I looked at our EMC contract and when I looked at the four-leaf contract, I sent them a small scope of work, which I provided in the staff report, which outlines some of the things that we need immediate help with. And I got those prices together as well as one from a company called Citygate and then it was recommended that I look at Harrison Associates because they were about to hire a brand-new senior planner with 13 years' experience and he would be able and willing to come and help us out immediately. And so, I've shared with some of the council members some of the work he's done. He's working on the Casa Rosa development now and we agreed to a price that was far less than the other companies had agreed to. And he has experience from Marina, so he has experience working with our city attorney and he has experience working with the gas station development team and he knows them well and so that makes him a good, a good soldier on our side of the fence. So, this has all been very positive. Todd is learning a lot, I'm learning a lot and we're moving our planning projects through faster than we were in the past and with confidence. And the sequel background is also really appreciated and I don't know if Deb wants to speak on David's behalf, but his name is David Mack and his resume is provided there for you. What I've done, because I'm using three months of salary savings to fund this portion of his work, that we would take a look at a January mid-year budget. It's common that community development doesn't always pay for all of itself. The fees that we collect are not always 100% and it's often a council policy decision as to how much we transfer in from the general fund to subsidize that. So, I'd like to come in January and in three months increments to tell you how this project is going. I hope that David can start and get our systems in place at 20 to 30 hours a week in the beginning and then taper down to being here for five hours a week, where he would meet with four-leaf and our building official and our city engineer and we'd talk about all the different projects and applications and then he could leave and either work from his office, but wouldn't have to spend near as much time here. One of the things that we know, as John alluded to, the governor adopted, approved 18 housing ordinance laws in like an hour and a half. And so, the community development laws, the Permit Streamlining Act, there are other things that we need to do to look at our systems and to get them up to speed and I think once they're up and running, then we'll be able to go back to a more cost-effective approach. But for now, I felt we needed some stronger help in community development and we're fortunate to find this David with the time that he concerned with us, though. Any further discussion?
I do, go ahead, Dan.
You say community development or planning?
Planning, it's mostly current planning.
So, what would the, what would the org chart be in the city then as regards planning, building and planning?
Well, it's a contract position, but basically, he's more of a mentor to Todd, but Todd reports to me. So, it's a contract that I manage from the city manager's office.
So, it's not, okay, so as far as the org chart goes, it would not say, the org chart would not say city manager Dave Todd underneath?
So, Todd is associate planner with three to five years' experience and David is a senior planner with 10, 10 years or more.
Okay, so would it be fair for the community to assume that Dave's gonna be running planning with San Juan?
With Todd in my support, right.
Okay. And I'm just full of pleasure, I met Dave the other day, had a really nice talk with him, he's very knowledgeable.
Leslie?
Harrison Associates, the firm that left us in the lurch a moment ago. Just a question.
Right, so, we're not relying on their engineering staff, except for the Third Street design, which is 90%, and then we'll be done with the engineering phase, but that's why it's an amendment, because we had an existing contract that we could bring them onboard quickly with. So, this is with Kate Giberson, it's his supervisor, it's not Frank Lopez, it's a whole different section of the, of the firm.
Okay.
We hired the person more so than we hired the firm.
Okay.
Okay, we'll open this for public comment. Do we hear any public comment?
I have no cards.
There's no cards, we'll close the public comment period. Possible action, motion to approve resolution 2019, exacts authorizing amendment to the Harrison Associates contract to add planning services. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
How about a second? Okay, John second. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all, we'll call for the question. All in favor, respond by aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Now, for discussion items, we have considered changing cannabis ordinance. Who's heading that thing?
Right, so, I've had the opportunity to meet with some potential cannabis business owners and they're interested in our city and investing in our city and that's exciting. They did express some concerns with our ordinance as I believe Pinnacle Strategies mentioned before and provided a brief outline for the council in my staff report, the exact section of the ordinance that applies to the nature of what the facilities look like and are built like and then a brief discussion. In that discussion, I'm really indifferent, I don't know much about cannabis cultivation, except to say that when I toured the facility in Hollister, it was, they'd have concrete floors and that there were benefits to that and I asked the operator, what's the difference between a gravel floor and a concrete floor? And so, you know, it's, it's, this was a reuse of an existing building, so they didn't have to invest in the concrete themselves. But we also met with Victor, the cannabis committee, kind of informally. I met with Victor and council member De Vries and then shared that conversation with John and, and said, you know, maybe we could move forward with a gravel condition in there if it were engineered and would protect the environment and the odors and other things that we intended to do with the concrete, so I could leave it at that point. It's, it's really more of a market-driven thing. I think Dan described, as we got started, everybody was gonna make millions of dollars and the cannabis growers were all filthy rich and they could afford to build palaces and that's not the case anymore, so the economy has changed and I believe there are a few in our audience tonight who can speak to that and I'll let Victor speak to it as well, but if the committee, the council member De Vries or council member Freeman wanna speak on this issue, I'm happy to let them go and let the discussion begin.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to it, John, and maybe.
Yeah, we'll follow.
Okay, I was very concerned about this issue, very concerned, because I saw there as being a lot of merit in the requirement for a concrete slab foundation on these growing facilities. And I had to kind of delve into why I thought it was necessary to have a concrete slab foundation and what was that about? I had to test my own thoughts about that against reality and true conditions on the ground. And one of the things that I thought was security, maybe, you know, tunneling under like COVID heroes, maybe I'm dating myself.
Yes, you are.
Someone like cutting a hole in the slab and stealing all the marijuana and then going out the tunnel, so security. And another one was obviously runoff, runoff meaning pesticides or besides other things that are used in the cultivation of marijuana, running off and being, leeching or percolating down into the aquifer and a concrete slab would obviously prevent that. So, I checked in with Pinnacle Strategies, Victor Gomez, on these presumptions that I had and he said that I was not exactly right, that the first thought about security wasn't necessarily apropos because security can be provided by serpentine wire and fencing and video cameras and all this other stuff. As to the concern about runoff and percolating into aquifer with this bad stuff that they, the first response was, well, they, they put more toxic things on cucumbers out in the San Juan Valley than they do on marijuana, so you're not making it worry about. Well, that didn't really carry the day for me, because I don't know what they put on cucumbers or marijuana and I don't really need to know that, I'm not a chemist. But what I did want to know is that is there a way to prevent any bad juju, I'll call it, from permeating the surface of where this cultivation happens and entering into the earth and into our aquifer and into our water systems? And I think there is a way of preventing that without requiring a concrete slab. And so, therefore, the conversation turned to what I'm gonna call an engineered cross-section, where we have not just gravel, but drain rock with a non-permeable membrane underneath that to prevent anything from bypassing that membrane and then have a catch or a runoff system from that. I draw it from some experience that I have in another industry where they have done that successfully, in the auto industry, dismantling, actually. So, I think there is a way of intercepting the runoff. I don't think security's an issue, so therefore, my concerns were kind of allayed and after the course of conversation, I found myself in favor of laxing on the city's requirement for concrete slab. That's just how I feel. I don't, I don't say that in an intention to dissuade anyone from a feeling otherwise, I'm just telling you what I went through, my thoughts.
Drainage to where?
Odor.
Would have to be a catch basin.
To where?
Retention坝?
Well, a catch basin could drain, could be caught up and then drained somewhere else, picked up afterwards, not, not a catch basin to the ocean.
To a, to a permeable.
Possibly.
Aligned or permeable, because if it's just a catch basin without being aligned, then we have the same issue doing it somewhere else.
That's right. And Jeff, those are good questions and I asked Victor, maybe you can speak to this, I don't know if he's had any chance to look at it, I said, there has to be, there have to be other cities and municipalities who have faced the same kind of question. And what I would be interested in is not just doing away with the concrete slab requirement, but if we do do away with it, say, okay, but you have to do this instead, and they call that an engineered cross-section. And a cross-section is what the, you know, three-quarter inch drain rock, maybe there's pea gravel on top, the membrane, how much gravel, you know, just the whole thing in a schematic. If you don't wanna do a concrete slab, you shall do this. And then Leslie, to your point, then if this is the membrane and if it's all sheet flows to a certain area receptacle, what is, what is that receptacle and how is that going to be lined and disposed of at some point?
But then you make people do all of this and they may as well put a concrete slab in there because the cost is gonna be, you know, the same as if they would have done a concrete slab.
I, that's, I understand where you're going with that, council member Edge, but concrete slabs are very expensive and that's why these guys wanna get away from it. I think you could probably do this at a fraction of the cost. I'm, I'm not a contractor, but it seems like it's a lot cheaper than pouring a concrete slab.
And to your point, if it goes to the wastewater plant, can the wastewater plant take that water in and how much, how much does that look like?
I'm not sure what the water is.
Yeah, and I, conceptually.
Yeah.
And, and the city would have to issue a permit for that, absolutely.
And then my concern is odor, because we have had that odor from the.
Different odor, yeah.
Right.
From earthbound and, and four-leaf.
So, my experience is, is that you have the exact same problem with concrete slabs. If you hose it off, where does the water go and how do you collect it and how do you treat it? You still have the same problem, you know, concrete slabs solve maybe some of the security problems a little bit tighter, but as far as wastewater can go, it's actually worse.
So, these issues would need to be addressed. They're the same issues regardless of.
A couple of.
Concrete.
I got one more point to make. One I forgot, sorry, I was remiss in making this other point. The other thing that I am cognizant of is that, in my opinion, this whole cannabis thing in California is going to be a bust. I don't know if anyone watched 60 Minutes a couple of weeks ago, but they're saying cannabis in California is a bust. And a lot of people were thinking it's gonna be, oh, the land of milk and honey and everyone's gonna be making millions of dollars. As that pertains to this discussion, and I was cognizant of this when we were passing this thing a few years ago, I don't want to see structures built in, especially in the San Juan Valley, in that purple area, it is the San Juan Valley, that cannot be repurposed for something. And we can't really get away from the hard shell concept, but if you create, if you also have a requirement of a concrete slab, now you've got something to deal with. What's, you know, if this company goes out of business because it's not the boon everyone thought it was gonna do, now what are you gonna do? What are we gonna do with that thing as a community?
And what do we do with all that gravel, though, also?
Well, but what would you rather deal with, a concrete slab or gravel?
I don't know.
Right? It's like pick your poison, but I think dealing with gravel.
You can break up the concrete easy.
Haul it off and recycle it.
That's not cheap.
A couple, Mayor Flores, if I could just share a couple of things. Number one, California state law and managed by both the California, those that are regulating California cannabis laws and local laws all have requirements for pesticides and uses for cannabis cultivation. So, you can be reassured that your agricultural commissioner will be keeping an eye on these operators, whether they're in the city of San Juan Batista, in Hollister, or unincorporated San Bernardino County. Your ag commissioner is gonna be out here inspecting their facilities to make sure that they're using the appropriate nutrients for, for this. The ones you should be extremely concerned about are illegal cannabis operations. Those are the ones siphoning off water and using whatever they want and now some of that same stuff being found in vape pens that are now killing people, right?
Absolutely.
But when it comes to regulated cannabis, these operators are gonna be. But when it comes to regulated cannabis, these operators are going to be under the microscope on the, for lack of a better word, pesticides and nutrients that are being used. Councilmember De Vries brings up a point that was discussed in the cannabis, the former cannabis ad hoc committee, and that was repurposing of the land. You could, yeah, Mayor Flores, you're absolutely correct, you could certainly break down a concrete slab and recycle it and do that stuff. Much easier to do it with gravel or base rock, because you could actually just completely remove that layer of base rock and repurpose it and use the soil. Cannabis cultivators, and there may be one or two here in the crowd, and they could correct me if I'm mistaken, but most cannabis operators, they're not interested in coming into your city or into the county, because they think yet your soil is grandioso, right? That it's the best soil around. They're not interested in your soil at all. They're going to bring in their own soil. So likely what they're going to do, whether they're operating in a greenhouse or in a fully enclosed facility, they're going to use raised pots on top of some kind of flooring, whether it's concrete or whether it's another type of flooring, and they're going to bring in their own soil to grow their own cannabis. They're not going to use the soil in the city of San Juan Batista. So there are ways of preventing that from happening. I did some research, Dan, after our conversation. If it is the council's desire to go a little bit softer on the ordinance language, your ordinance actually doesn't say concrete slab, it says foundation, right? And a foundation could be a variety of things, but concrete was the real purpose behind the language that was drafted in the ordinance. But if you would like, you could give, you could give myself and your city manager direction to potentially come back with some language to modify the, amend the current language in your ordinance, either expand on it or clarify it, to allow really your staff to determine whether they can mitigate the runoff or not, right? You want, ultimately, at the end of the day, I think what you're trying to address here is the mitigation of water runoff. And there isn't, candidly, there just isn't a tremendous amount of runoff, of water runoff in these cultivation facilities. Most of the water is actually absorbed by the plant and into the air, right? It's not like they're watering these plants and you're seeing water come off of the flooring. That's not happening, right? And I know some of you have walked through cannabis cultivation facilities, that's just not the case. And so you're not going to have this abundant amount of excess water, but I know you are concerned with, you know, obviously, the condition of your aquifers and any kind of contamination there. So we could probably put together some language that at least leaves a majority of discretion or at least somewhat of that discretion to staff, so we could address the issues around mitigating any kind of runoff in these facilities. I don't know if that helps, I don't know if that convolutes the conversation, but I think allowing us to come back and maybe draft some language could be, could be helpful if you want to go this direction. Or you could just say, you know, what, we're not interested, applicants have to deal with the ordinance as written. Again, that's, that's up to you, but I'm sure there are some members of the public that have an opinion on that.
So Victor, you know, I've read that these farms, the marijuana plants, require a lot of water. And so I guess, you know, with our water situation, there, you know, we don't have a lot of water. So, but there's nothing that can be done about that, right?
They do have to identify a water source, that is one of the requirements. There isn't much you could do, it depends on the use, right? So mixed light operators, greenhouse operators, yeah, you're likely, because of ventilation and climate control within the greenhouses, you're going to have more of an escape of the humidity and the water vapor. Fully enclosed facilities tend to actually capture 90-plus percent of the water, and so you don't lose it, you lose the water because it's in the plant, right? But outside of that, the drying does happen usually in-house, right? So all that is captured all within the, within the facility.
And Councilmember, a couple of these parcels, as we know, Mr. Koch has a well on his property, and so does the adjacent property, so they may not be relying on municipal water for the agricultural purpose, just a potable water.
You do lose pretty much all the water when you're doing open grow, right? And I think I only know of one county in California that allows open cannabis grow, which means hoops and tarps and, or just full open air or hemp, right? Hemp is, has to be grown outdoors, and that does consume quite a bit of water. But here, with greenhouses and fully enclosed facilities, you could certainly capture a significant amount of the water that you're using.
Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. I know this is just a discussion item, but what are the wishes of the council on this? Bring it on the members of the public. Next agenda?
And the public.
Pardon?
Members of the public.
Public comment. Okay, public comment. Well, we didn't have a line, just discussion items.
I'm not a member of the community necessarily, but I do have an idea for, I don't.
Just a lot of card. Just listening.
Stand up there.
Stand up there and say something.
So one thing that is a concern to a lot of communities with cannabis coming in, they are heavy water users and heavy energy users, and in the town, in the city of San Juan Batista, they probably would be among the largest energy users, possibly the largest. We've been working with a number of indoor cannabis growers where they, you know, they've got a ton of lights, they use a lot of energy, and finding ways that they can offset their energy usage. And so there may be some opportunity here to leverage the fact that they're coming in and going to be using a lot of energy and water, maybe, I don't know if it's putting something in the ordinance that, you know, not mandates or maybe mandates, the fact that they have to be zero-carbon facility, or they have to offset their energy usage with a certain amount of solar on their facility. And like you were saying, you know, if you're, if they're going to build a building, maybe the future use of it would be that it housed a ton of solar on the roof or in the neighboring area, which it looks like is exactly the area that we're talking about, is well number six is right there, so.
Yeah.
I mean, just an idea, but you could throw out, hey, if you're, if you're going to permit a building on this spot, you've got to build a solar farm right next to it with the power or well. Just an idea.
Any other comment?
I was, hi, Dan Fernandez, CSG Monterey Bay.
Hi.
I was going to say something similar, except for water, perhaps it could also, the facility could also do its own water recycling, water reuse, because there are also heavy water users as well, so that any water that comes through is treated perhaps onsite, just another thought.
Good idea. Thank you. Any other comment?
Yeah, my name's Ron Eldredy, I'm a cultivator from Monterey County, right over the hill. I think what everybody has to realize, like Mr. De Vries mentioned, cannabis is at a price right now, but we all know that that price is dropping. So we've got to realize that, you know, if you guys want concrete floors and all the bells and whistles, you're basically putting us at a disadvantage. There's a lot of municipalities that are opening up throughout the state of California, and we're looking for the best deal. That's the bottom line, as cultivators, because we know it's going to be a commodity, and it's going to be hard to compete. So if you start putting all these conditions, we're just going to look for other municipalities to go to. So Monterey County has been very open, it's been very good. We, as far as the water issue of runoff, there are ways to mitigate this. As Victor said, there's canals that you can put underneath the pot so that you have a catch basin and reuse that water. So there's different ways, but you don't have to put a concrete floor, per se, to catches. And as you said, Mr. Freeman, the water is going to go somewhere, so you've got to catch it or do something with it, otherwise it's, you're just, you're just moving it from one place to another. That's all I got to say, but there are different ways to mitigate it. But this is an agriculture product, it's a plant, we're tested parts per billion, there's no other agriculture commodity that's tested that way. So when you start talking about pesticides and all these other things, we're using a lot of organic methods with, with conventional methods as well. So you're not really going to get a lot of harmful waste runoff, so I just wanted to give you guys that point of view.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? There are no more comments, and we'll close this issue. We'll go to item seven, just comments.
What's the direction of the council after that discussion?
There's not, there's not an action item, it was a discussion item.
A discussion that results in what?
Well, put it on agenda, I guess, for next meeting or whatever. What action do we need to take on this?
I thought we were going to allow the staff to have a certain amount of latitude to kind of make some of the decisions. If we don't want that, we need to probably re-agendize it and do something else.
Well, two things, if we allow that latitude or whatever else we allow, it's going to be a change to an existing ordinance.
Right.
So that's going to, that's going to involve a future agenda item, just change in ordinance. So after we've had this discussion, maybe it results in that, I don't, I don't know. And if it does result in that, then what should the proposed changes be? I think that's the purpose of the discussion.
So that would be the result of our research. And when we talk about staff, we're not talking about the political science guy, we're talking about the hydrologists and the engineering and the city engineers, right?
I, so I would say, I think it, I'll go first, I think it does warrant taking another look at this requirement in the San Juan Batista ordinance, because I think that issues like odor and runoff and security can all be addressed in ways that do not require a concrete slab. However, I do think, as I said earlier, that there should be some standard to which applicants, cultivators are held. I just drew this out quickly. I've got a cross-section here of six inches of pea gravel, a membrane, 12 inches of three-quarter inch drain rock above native soil. I mean, I don't know that that's right or wrong, I just, what do I know? I just drew that right now. But we should have some cross-section that's acceptable in lieu of a concrete slab. It should not be that they can just do whatever they want, just set these pots on dirt, and that's good. We should require something. I was in the city hall today to get a roofing permit, because my son and I are redoing our roof, and I was told that the nailing pattern on the plywood has to be six and 12, two and a half inch nails. I mean, it's very specified, right, on how to nail plywood onto my roof. Well, my goodness, we can certainly say, okay, if you're going to grow marijuana in San Juan Batista, you need to have it be on this type of surface, right? A standard to which these people are held. So I would really encourage, if we're going to change the ordinance, that it be changed to some kind of standard.
And include pre and post soil testing. If we're going to allow it on the soil, know what we have originally, and when they leave to have it tested post for any mitigation that needs to occur, if any.
Or if we want to leave, get the slabs.
If it were a soil, we would need mitigation.
I would rather see a slab floor rather than just a piece of rock.
I'd like to have the city manager take that on and clarify it for us and see where we have to go.
I also like the idea of it becoming green.
Yes.
Both for water and energy.
I love that idea.
Exactly, yeah, that's for sure.
It would be for their advantage, once again, the shower power shut off, the PG&E.
Yes, exactly.
You know, solar power is becoming cheaper than, PG&E is now starting at about 12 cents a kilowatt hour. That's not cheap. That's not, that's expensive energy, and it goes up from there as the more you use, you know, and you can generate, solar can generate power at about four or five cents a kilowatt hour. My simple math tells me that's less than half of PG&E. So if you ask me, do I want to purchase power at 5 cents a kilowatt hour or at 12 cents a pound? I'm going to pick the five.
I think we all would.
Okay, so we'll direct the staff to.
Direction received.
Come up with a.
To bring the staff.
Yeah. Does the city, city council have any comments other than that? Any extra comments? City manager?
No, sir.
City attorney? The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, respond by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.